Yep, we're online. I believe Dr. Grant will be joining us here shortly hopefully, but I imagine we can get started.
All right. I'd like to call to order this meeting on this regard. All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. The board met this evening in executive session for 30 minutes. I've got time to discuss personnel matters and then we spent 30 minutes catching up with the retirees that we'll be honoring this evening. Jordi Furtzer is at the Sun Tech Federation this evening. Many of us tried to attend last night, but also there was a problem with the river on this evening. It was raining and thundering, but we tried. And also, Dr. Bridge is joining us via Zoom. There she is. Okay, great. That accounts for everyone. Do I miss any announcements on the recording? Our next agenda item is to recognize Youth and Philanthropy Team, and then we will recognize the place where we begin the discussion.
All right. Youth and philanthropy paid an awesome opportunity this year for a group of students. And the short of it is given real money, $5,000. They studied philanthropy, all aspects of what conmutates a worthy project and a rationale supporting a nonprofit or a particular cause. They met in our school group and joined with several other districts groups. So they shared collaboration and good opportunity to really examine the importance of philanthropy. Our assistant principal, Mr. Popowiz, was tasked with putting the group together. And we're excited tonight to recognize, I'm gonna read the entire list. If you are here, would you please stand? And we will call on you to share a little bit about your experience with the youth and philanthropy initiative. Erin DeSantis, Alex Gilmore, Clara Graham, Riley Golden-Luthy, Lillian Guth, Delaney McSween, Ella Mirshahi, Olivia Morgan, Justin Musley, Gibson Omealy, Lucy Schmedel, Mitchell. Do I have one more? All right. Mr. Mitchell. Then, ladies and gentlemen, please, we'd all like to hear more about your experience with youth and philanthropy.
Sure. Thank you so much, everyone. So a group of about a dozen of us that was organized. And so we had some periodic meetings throughout a couple of months. And about every month, we would have a meeting as a group together to kind of work out sort of what our agenda was for that particular month. So it kind of went on and on, and it all built up to us eventually giving out $5,000 to four organizations. The Central Susquehanna Site Services for Good Vision in Early Childhood, Camp Koala for Children's Brief Support, Transitions of PA, and the Union Snyder Community Aid Action Agency. So we gave a couple thousand dollars to each of those organizations, which was really great. And then in our final meeting, we got together with probably two dozen other school districts over in Danville. And that's where they were announced of the grant money. And I think it was around $75,000 that was given from around the community to different organizations and businesses. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Kate, and I think that the members being here, like, it was very eye-opening with the amount of volunteer work that we did at these meetings. And it also inspired me to do more volunteer work outside of that. And I hope to continue that during my school year.
Sure. One more I can say. I mean, I think everybody covered this. But I think going forward, I definitely think this is something we should continue. Because learning about other people's struggles, and not just other people's struggles, but how other people are going out and helping the community is so valuable. And it's something that, especially here in Lewisburg, we're not super exposed to a lot of those issues. We don't really go through a lot of those things that we donated money towards. And so I just think it was, it was an opportunity and an experience to really understand other people's situations and experience of the pain they endure and to contribute.
Our other students we're honoring tonight are some high school students who successfully played the stock market game. And while we aren't all here in present, Mr. Krieger is in Mrs. Osborne's place. So Mike, if you want to, please share our names. And I'm very happy you've stepped in. We'll be able to have our one student share with us too. Go ahead.
So it's another great spring for it. We have incredible support from Mifflinburg Bank that again enables us to play a game that costs money, but we don't have to worry about the monetary side. I think Mifflinburg Bank has donated $5,000 approximately for the last 20 years, kind of enabling all our students to have the opportunity to participate. So special thanks to them again for that and all the support that the board and the administration offers. But our kids, they do great every year. It's across the board to give our kids the opportunity to exceed at something. And they have a quite distinguished track record of doing so. But our top finishers at the high school for the spring, Lily Young finished 20th in the state. And she had kind of jumped out early and was actually leading the state for a couple of weeks, which kind of helped to motivate her interest in the game. And eventually, good was not good enough as not too many people were able to overtake her. But Henry Heitzelman ended up finishing in 12th place. And another example of a kid who just really embraced the concept of staying on top of the media and the different events going on around them to make the connections, to really kind of identify stocks that would be good. But certainly, first and foremost, Kevin Seawards, who was able to accomplish things this spring that in 20 years of participating in the game, nobody, not just from Lewisburg, but nobody from any district in any state has been able to accomplish that, at least that I'm aware of. Kevin, I guess a little backstory. Kevin, last year, you were last, first in the fall?
Yeah.
So he won the state title in the fall last year, and then came back in the spring, and you were dead last?
Yeah.
He has this gift of whatever he finds, like, he just has a way of kind of researching and identifying the stuff that's going to change. And we tell the kids, day one, whenever you're going to the stock market game, please do not think this is real investing. We're playing a game. So don't be misled to think that we're encouraging our kids to go take their money. We offer to use the district money, but but not about like a real-life investing strategy where it'd be much more kind of reserved in your actions, but trying to find those things at the market. It's just not making sense with what's happening. And Kevin's embraced that from day one, first place to last place, to coming in in the fall again, finishing in first place. And then this year in the spring, he finished just under $32 million. Usually if somebody finishes, like Henry finished at $350,000 in two days. So that's phenomenal result. So as a middle-class kid, at the last meeting, recognized for $700,000. 99% of the time, that's enough to win the state title. So for him to do what he did, accomplishing almost $32 million. But the two things to really highlight about that with Kevin, once he got to $1 or $2 million, he had it locked down. Like, nobody's going to catch him. And I know he's in my advisory. And I'd ask him periodically, like, what are you doing? Are you still going? Are you gonna just kind of kick back and just ride it out? All the way up through the last day, he's still trading. And not just making trades, but the last Monday of the game, his investment went south. He went from $10 million, put everything into one stock, and went to negative form, which obviously not desirable. But the stock did recover, and he was able to kind of get back to that $10 million. But it still wasn't enough for him to just coast through with that. Ended up couldn't, I don't even know how many trades he made in the last week, but I think you were over 200 for the... I think last I asked him, maybe it was like 250 trades over the 10-week period. Not a one-hit wonder, but a kid who just embraced the notion of going out, researching, and finding things. And hats off to him. I mean, there's, there's an interest that we can teach. We can teach how the stock market works, but there's, if there was insight like he's figured out, I'd have retired long ago. So hats off to Kevin with doing the best that anybody has ever seen anywhere.
We all want to know, Tej, how you did, share what you will, please.
I don't know. I just kind of, I guess I just paid like a lot of attention to what was going on in the stock market. I mean, I don't know. Maybe I got a bit lucky. I don't know what to say. I guess I just was able to make a bunch of money. Risked a lot of, I risked, like, getting a lot of money. A lot of the time, Mr. Krieger was saying, like, I was at a negative balance at one point in time. But I don't know. It is kind of, it's a game. So I just played it.
And is this a future career aspiration at all? Finance, investment?
Maybe.
Anyone else question a stock tip?
You may find in life that it's actually better to be lucky.
Well, thank you for coming. Mr. Krieger, thank you.
Next up, we are going to recognize our retirees. Well, Kathy takes the time to approach the board. The board really does want to express their gratitude because they've come and played.
We are very fortunate to spend a little time tonight with some very important people, professionals who have served the district and made connections with us as fellow staff here in Lewisburg. Brenda Fleming, one of our speech and sign language interpreters, could not join us this evening, but we're happy to celebrate with four wonderful people. I'm gonna call you up beside me. I'm gonna read what's in the certificate. We are gonna share some comments, building principles, and I. And then, as I said, it is entirely up to you if you wish to speak. All right. Tammy Winters. Round to this by, all right. In appreciation for 13 years of distinguished care and service to the children, families, and staff of the Lewisburg Area School District, presented to Tammy Winters. Thank you. Thank you. She's hiring Tammy. Tammy came in to serve in the district at a time we needed one-to-one for a student with a wide range of needs. She knew with her eyes open, it would entail all aspects of care for that student. And the work ethic was evident. The commitment was there. The genuine devotion to that student, as apparent as knowing Tammy. She went on to another assignment. She's finished at Kelly with some of our youngest learners here in the most recent years. And again, my sincere appreciation for your work. Kind words from Mr. Wetzel. I want you to come up. Yeah, where would you like to be? Oh, fuck, she's gonna read it. That's true.
So Tammy, 14 and a half years in the district, 14 and a half official years, five and a half a year is a long-term sub. I did have the fortune when Tammy was working with her original assignment. I was teaching fifth grade. So I got to work with her that year. And I think something that stood out then and has stayed true the whole way through, she's an advocate for any child she works with, whether it's the one she's assigned to or any student in the building. She has such an awareness of the students, their needs, will pick up on little things if there's a change in behavior. Even looking at kids and seeing, you know, it seems like maybe they've worn the same shirt for a couple of days in a row. She's gonna pick up on that, and she's gonna do everything she can in her power through our staff, through funds we have available on the district, and even her own money if she needs to, to make sure she makes it right with those kids and that they know they're cared for, they're loved, and that school is a safe place for them. Just phenomenal, everything she does. And sometimes it's, she's so good at what she does that you don't always realize until there are days where she's not able to be there due to her own sickness. And then trying to piece together and figure out how do we, how do we cover for Tammy that day? And trying not to miss a beat. Just an incredible human being that cares as much as she cares for the kids. It's the same for the staff. My two years at Kelly now, I've gotten used to that right before winter break, she's taking a cart around of goodies. And every single staff member gets to pick something she's purchased for them, just little things to bring joy and just to make it a better place. That's a trend with all three of the retirees that I have the good fortune of speaking about tonight. They're super focused on relationships, and they know that's the most important thing. We need to care for our kids, be there for one another, make Lewisburg School District a better place than when you found it. And I think that's something that without a doubt is true. And then the other thing that does hold true for all of them, I feel like they're all going out on top as well, which is not always easy to do. I wish we could have them for many more years, but they're going out on top. And it's great to see just the same energy and passion from day one all the way to the last day. Congratulations, Tammy. We wish you
Thank you. I'd say thank you for giving me the opportunity to be with the district this many years. I've really enjoyed my time with the kids. I'm gonna get emotional, so I'm gonna keep it short because I just love them and I miss them all.
In appreciation for 18 years of distinguished service to the children, families, and staff of Kelly Elementary School and the Lewisburg Area School District, presented to Mary Ritter. Longevity, I too remember when Mary came into the district. Then in count of Mary, you were able to guide Mrs. Rice, Mr. Dalton, Mr. Rule, and now Mr. Wetzel and Hoffmaster. Into their role. Though I'd say you helped them to understand how it really works at Kelly Elementary as the administrative assistant, Mary ran all things that needed to happen in the Kelly Elementary office. And we are so appreciative and sincerely grateful for all that time, effort, and energy and passion that you invested in us. Thank you.
Saving me. And that right there actually sums up a lot. We're saving. There are times in the office, I'm going on script here. Times in the office where you, we get the joy of hearing many a variety of noises and sounds in the office. We have the nurse's suite there. We have a calm room there.
Calm room. What a missed hour.
And at times, what is going on? And you realize, Mary's just haggling for a better deal. She will get it. She will find ways to get any coupon, free shipping, you name it. She has. And very, and that is an aspect she takes very seriously. It's, it is the district money. It's taxpayer money, and we're not just gonna spend it for the city. We're also gonna shop around and find the best deals that we can. It's easy to find one thing, boom, go. That's not her style. And very appreciative for that. It's been super helpful to me, and it's hard to put into words what she's meant for me transitioning into Kelly. As Kathy said, she absolutely has broken the principal's edge. She knows how the school works. She gets it. She understands people, how they work. And with her time at Kelly, I mean, 18 and a half years all at Kelly, she's seen the people through the seasons of their lives, as they've been new hires, seasoned veterans, the subs that we have come back, the retired employees. She has the history on them. The backstory can fill me in. At times on things I didn't even realize I needed to know, but it's helped me for knowing them. It's just been incredible in my transition to have someone like Mary there, just to help me in all aspects of everything, even if it's time to vent, go in there and vent a little bit.
It's more the other way.
We're smoking. And along with, she has that side where she's gonna haggle and she's gonna get the best deal. But she's also so caring and compassionate, looking out for kids. Noticing again, just like Tammy, when we've seen kids that maybe they've had those same shoes, like, what can we do? We need to be there to help those kids, giving quarters to the kindergarteners so they can tie their shoes.
Motivation.
Yes, absolutely. Organizing a bicycle helmet drive with EVAN previously, just to make sure kids are safe when they're riding their bikes over the summer. And doing that just out of the kindness of her heart, because she wanted to do that and felt that's what we need to do as a school for our kids, so they can be safe over the summer. And another great example was this year, we had a student, a student that tried to figure out what would be the best plan for them in their gifted program. And the student had an interest in sewing and quilting. And if you need to know anything about that, this is your lady. That's a passion of hers. She worked with Mrs. Miller, our gifted teacher at Kelly, and took this on completely on her own as a project with this student. And the piece that she put in, and she was, even we were talking about it this week, a piece was put into the art show, and the student told her she felt famous because people were coming up to her and recognizing, that was you that made that? So just to see that.
Yeah, the girl.
Yeah, not me.
Just to see that. And that was just, she knew that was an opportunity for her to share her passion and to bring that joy to that student and to hear what that student shared with Mary about wanting to continue this, what her family shared, that it's just been incredible to see her excitement to take this on. And then even this year, we worked, Mary's always gone into second grade with them, working in symmetry and math, and helped them. It's a natural kind of fit with quilting. So she's done some mini lessons. And this year, with retirement, she was going big, so brought in members of the Quilters Guild that she's a part of. So every single second grader had the opportunity to pick three colors. And these women that Mary worked with made a mug rug for every single student and also for every teacher of colors that the kids picked out for them. And it was just awesome to see that and to hear all the positive stories that are coming back to us already from that. Just incredible. And it just shows again that she will do anything she can to give kids the best experience possible. So very excited for her. Definitely gonna miss her. Don't really wanna think about life without Mary right now. So I try to avoid the low-chain links that get bitten down each day. And I think a couple more to it, see if we can reverse it. But excited for her. It's another extreme passion and major piece of her life that's her family. And I think just being able to spend time with them, being there for family, and to continue with quilting. We're gonna see if we can continue that and keep that going too. But again, just very, very thankful for all she's done, for myself, for the kids, the staff, and just the entire Lewisburg School District, the mission.
Last night, Kelly had a little retirement dinner, and I came with appropriation. I did it again. I just do want to thank you for the opportunity, sir. I have worked in this district only in one building, but with the various other roles in the district, like being on the sick bank, or when I first came, Diane Yoder said, "I don't want to be the representative of the secretaries at Kelly if you're down." So when we had a support staff meeting, it was me, until last year, when I said, "I will be gone. You need to do it now." So I passed along for the other secretary. We have many excellent coworkers that I work with, all the teachers, the staff, the support staff, and the administrators. Just wonderful. The board members, thank you so much. You absolutely grab hold of what is excellence and what is the best for our students. And I appreciate that so much. I will say, I've appreciated working with various principals, each one with their own special take on things. And I've made a few things very clear. One is, I'm not in-school suspension. I have no training in that, I have no desire to be that. So you take your bad kids, put them aside. I'm secretary. And I'm not saying that lightly. I really mean it. I'm not. But anyway. I was allowed to express my ideas for changes or improvements, and a few of them even were accepted. Like, that is really nice to feel that you have the ability, not the ability, the privilege to be able to say what you really think should go on and at least be heard, even if you're not gonna get it. So I'll take this opportunity right now and say, Kelly Elementary needs more bathrooms for adults today. A few other things besides other duties as assigned is the greatest line I've ever written into a job description. That is just great. But I have, like Mr. Wetzel shared, have had the privilege to have not just duties, but privileges. If you have been to Kelly recently, last year, I believe, was that last year? We painted, got the bollards painted because I saw an idea, and I said, why can't we have these kind of things here? Make it friendly and inviting and like a kids' school, because it's not a prison. It's a kids' school. So yeah, we have had kids still walk into them, right? They don't see them, but most people like them. That was my idea. And we followed through with Sherman Williams and students from the high school that came in and painted them. So it was really just wonderful. I have worked with all these other things that he said, which is so sweet of him. We've done other projects in the past. It's always like inspired by a child who has a need. So the helmet thing came from one student who got hurt. He had other problems. He had, sadly, came in one day and told me he had been hurt by his biological dad. And right away, I'm like, no, I have to report it. Thankfully, he had already said that to someone else. But he did not have his helmet, and I asked him about it. We were talking about riding bikes. I don't know. We got to be friends, and I still encourage him now, even though he's not even in our school. But he said he didn't have a helmet, and he rode bikes. And I said, your brain is your most important part of you. And that's how that bike thing came about, the bike helmets. And we got those helmets just after we went into lockdown. EVAN helped us distribute them. Other duties as assigned were distributing 600 students' materials that didn't go home with them. That was an amazing thing. Amazing. We got to deliver some. Anyway, I just want to say that I have been changed for the good by my friendships. I think of Tammy, think of others in school, and I I think of Pammy, think of others in school, and I think that I have helped change others for the good. I have a lot of good memories of special times at Kelly and special people, and I'm just so glad. So I thank you very much for these eighteen years, and I appreciate all of you and the work that you do for the best. Thank you very much.
Our next honor read tonight is Karen Bennett. Distinguished Career in Education Award. In deep appreciation for twenty-one years of dedication to education in the Lewisburg Area School District. For believing in children, for sharing not only your knowledge but your heart, for guiding by example, for inspiring with passion, for touching the human soul, for leaving an indelible mark on the future. You have made all the difference. Awarded to Karen Bennett by the Lewisburg Area School District. You might know my opening line. I have the privilege of helping us celebrate our retiring teacher, Karen Bennett. I can boast, she is among our very best of wonderful classroom educators. And I can proudly say, I have Karen Bennett to come and work in the district. Initially in the fourth grade, and then when she chose to move to grade five, we made an excellent choice. Karen is that teacher we all, as parents, want our children to have. She is two parts passion, sincere caring and concern for the development of each of her students each and every year, and true passion for her content and the skill of lessons she was teaching. She has loved introducing children to their world, nurturing their learning and understanding, and then celebrating with them their growth and accomplishments. When they realize they have met a challenge or finished a tough task, she is there as their biggest fan. She is the epitome of the natural teacher, eager to see the challenges and take them on, and then not resting until she has designed the best learning plans, supported the best learning experiences, and helped students to her expectations for doing their best. All the while, being their most ardent supporter and tirelessly working to reach each of her students and meet their unique needs. We got the best deal when she decided to enter the teaching profession. And for the past twenty-one years, we have been the rich beneficiaries of Karen's excellent work. Karen, it has been both my professional and personal pleasure to know you as a colleague, and I thank you and wish you well as you enjoy the next great adventure in your life.
Thank you.
So as Kathy said, twenty-one years for Karen. Ten years in fourth grade, eleven in fifth. I definitely had the privilege of teaching with her in fifth grade. And now being able to come back, she was one I was so excited to be a part of working with again, having as a colleague, by coming to the elementary world again. With, with that time, the twenty-one years, think that that's so long for some people, that goes by in a blink of an eye. There's, what has changed, especially in education in twenty-one years, is amazing. And then for Karen to shift from fourth to fifth grade, and she's at the forefront of everything we're doing. If there are new challenges, new things we're looking at, she's there. She's not just setting her ways with how to do things, but always looking to improve. This year, with the science curriculum, really pushing herself, doing new things there and promoting that to staff for next year to keep pushing it and moving forward with. And as Kathy said, just another testament of everything we stand for and everything we believe in in this district. She lives and breathes it every single day. There's not a kid in her room that she does not know multiple details about their lives and what makes them tick, and then trying to find ways to bring those things into her teaching. That's a hard thing to do. And even kids at the elementary age, they get to certain points and they want to know, "Why am I learning this? How is this relevant to me? How is this going to apply to my life in the future?" Karen answers those questions for them. She connects those pieces for them. Really been able to do some unique things with her son, who's an incredible artist in Portland, and connect her kids with them, with him, over the past few years and do really some amazing things there and spark some interest with students that we have here. And that's another piece that is such a big passion for Karen too, is her family. So while we'd love to hold on to her forever, we are excited for her to have more flexibility and time to spend time with them. But she definitely will be missed. And she's one too, that when you think about dealing with all the change you're dealing with in education, changing grade levels, she's never slowed down. She kept going. She's another one that's ending at the top of her game, could keep going for years and years. But we definitely want her to enjoy retirement, so happy for her. And it's just remarkable to see that passion, that energy, that excitement, the awareness. And a team player, the number of co-teachers or team members she's worked through and been through with fourth and fifth grade. And in fifth grade with switching to partner teacher, she needs to be able to collaborate and work very well together. There's never been someone that she hasn't been able to do that with, and it's been a wide range of personalities. And she's handled it and done incredibly well. So big loss, big, big shoes to fill for sure. But again, just super excited for her, happy for her. The next chapter of her life.
If you know me, you know I'm much more comfortable talking with the whole room, which is great, than with my peers. I didn't take my first college course until I was thirty-eight. And then I went full-time and kids working in the house, in the house. Graduated, and I got an interview with Kathy. I remember when she called me about that second year and said, "Are you sitting down for something?" Yeah. And then she offered me the job. But just thank you for your trust and faith in me and everybody's support I have as a new children. But all the people who support me.
And our last one, we're retiring honor reads tonight. Let's bring Dr. Brenda Dunn forward. Not arranged in alphabetical order, but by years of service, I've actually worked out both ways. Distinguished Career in Education Award in deep appreciation for twenty-six years of dedication to education in the Lewisburg School District. For believing in children, for sharing not only your knowledge but your heart, for guiding by example, for inspiring with passion, for touching the human soul, for leaving an indelible mark on the future. You have made all the difference. Awarded to Dr. Dennis Dunn. It has been my sincere pleasure to know and work with Brenda for twenty-four years here in the district. I came to Lewisburg in 2000 to work in the high school with her husband Jim. But in the bargain, I met and came to know Brenda. She worked then as one of our middle school counselors, and she and I found we had lots in common. We were both trying to work with Jim. We were both raising our young sons, and therefore we saw lots of basketball games over time. We talked about and we shared milestones in our families and genuinely enjoyed working together here in the district. We've always made it a point to have at least one lunch together on one of our in-service days and enjoyed that friendship. Some years later, Dr. Dorado supported an initiative to work more purposefully with our career standards. And we asked Brenda to transition away from middle school to a newly created position as our K-12 career counselor. And I thank Brenda for that line of dedicated work, as we had to figure it out. We were figuring it out and developed some good pieces for the very first time. She was instrumental in taking us forward in support of students identifying potential post-secondary training and education options as well as career pathways after finishing high school. This allowed Brenda to forge stronger ties for us with the Chamber of Commerce, SUN ATI, our neighboring universities, a number of resources that we've been able to opt into our career education curriculum. Finally, I thank Brenda for serving in her most recent role as one of our high school counselors and for the most recent changes in the scope of work that is part of counselors' work. Our students since the pandemic have presented with needs for support in social, emotional, and mental health. Brenda has been part of our full school counseling group in this important role of support and advocacy. When Brenda came into the high school, we were able to have counselors in our high school to best meet the needs of our students. Thank you, Brenda, for all your work and service, and we wish you very, very well. Because Josh and Paula went to SUN graduation tonight, hope's phone rescheduled. I sang solo, but we're giving Brenda a turn here.
So I was nervous about this, as many of you said, and wasn't sure what to say. And last night, I said, "God, just help me figure this out." And on my way to work today, he said, "Bring some up home." So I forgot you guys. I enrolled in Lewisburg in the employee program at the Lewisburg Area School District in 1998. Even though placed at the high school level, it has taken me twenty-six years to graduate. Soon after I started, surprise, another baby was on the way. I guess I'll go to the middle school where I thought I would stay. Oh, this will be fun, because they hired my husband Jim. Wait, what's happening? There are people picketing him. That's short-lived, and in the district, I got to do a lot of awesome things. Taking my dog to work, advising clubs such as bowling club, basketball, cooking, proddish, bread froth. Being the junior high JV and varsity game manager, trips to businesses and colleges, student interviews with community members, peer mediation, student counseling groups, SUN ATI workshops, SATs, and career counseling, working in many different buildings. My hope was to enhance the student experience. We need more than reading, writing, and reading. Reach true excellence. It wasn't long before I was raising three boys while working full-time. So I thought it would be the perfect time to earn my doctorate degree and planned student trips to Costa Rica, Dominican Republic, Italy, and Greece, because there's so much outside of Lewisburg for students to see. A lot has happened in my tenure here. Columbine, Bonfret, nine eleven, going to war. Reception, Blue Ribbon Award, Best of High School, Best Community for Music, MySpace, Facebook, personal devices, PSSA, Keystone, No Child Left Behind, Every Student Succeeds Act, pandemic, online learning, Zoom meetings. So much changed from year to year. There were highs and lows for the long majority. Low, students struggling, hurting, depression, anxiety, and worse evolved, parent or student or even student who have died. High, great challenges, eight great colleagues, an exceptional community, trust, interactions with students, and seeing their achievements and work here has given me great pride. Mark, Donald, Lloyd, Tracy, David, Dave, George, Kathy, Paula, Eric, and Josh. I had the pleasure of them supervising me. A shout out to Jen and Jenny, but I can't mention every school counselor and colleague. So many professionals. Together, we committed to be the best that we could be. I'm finally graduating and heading off to retirement. I thank God for being able to serve the Lewisburg Area School District. I thank this community, the school board, administrators, and students for their support. I thank my family, especially Jim, for giving me love and encouragement when needed. Now let's go celebrate and go to some island resort.
Thank you all very much. You're so much welcome to see us. What we say that we have student guests is now we have the boring bits. John, we have, we do have one in comments to the board. Do you have any others to read?
Nothing on one.
Okay. And so I think we'll, can we hear the email?
Sure.
Did you think it was a non-internal?
To you.
Yeah, I'll put it to end, but then, sorry. All right. Well, we only have three board members this evening. Who wants to start? Well, Chris, as I talked with you earlier, you can have the.
I'll start. So I'll give the analytics update from Springfield Sports as we move into playoff action here. First of all, Boise Tech last week started state playoffs. They won the district title. Played in the state playoffs, the team last week defeated Wild Missing in the first round at South Lewisburg Racquet Club up there. Then Friday, they went on to, they played Lancaster Country Day School in the Hershey Racquet Club in Hershey in the class, PAA class, AA state quarter farm. And they lost that match in the close match, a lot tested, but they hit Lancaster Country Day and ended up being the state champion again. So no shame in losing to the state champ. And now, this weekend, we still have, as far as, as soon as we have a singles player and a doubles team competing in the state tournament, which will start tomorrow again at Hershey, at the Hershey Racquet. So they're down there. We left that school today, they're practicing, and it will start. We left that school today to practice in, and it will start like in tomorrow. Additionally, in PIAA state competition this weekend, we have nine female student athletes and seven male student athletes for the track team that will start competition in Sugar River University tomorrow and Saturday. So they'll be down there competing in class triple A down there. And we had several district champions that are last weekend at Woodsport. They're heading down there. And then the boys and girls lacrosse teams, both will be playing for District Four Class Double-A Championship Games on Wednesday night at Danville. The girls will play at 6:00 PM against Danville. And the boys will play at 7:30 against Seale. So while I just reported all the things about wins and losses with varsity as post season, what I want to share the next is what anyone who's at the lacrosse game Tuesday night would witness what sports is more about and what camaraderie and sportsmanship is about. And the game before boys played Danville, Seale's row boys played Delphon. Delphon tragically lost one of their players, a 16-year-old in a dragon accident on Saturday. So they're playing in the lacrosse game three days after. After they go through the handshake line, the Seale's row players and Delphon players circle up and take the knee as our teams, as Lewisburg or Danville, are coming off the field. Our team jobs, runs, rushes to join in as did Danville. They all circle up on one knee, you know, and that moment of caring, prayers, whatever went on in that circle, coaches, everybody, that's just tremendous showing what sports, when it gets down to the heart of what it is all about. And I was very proud to see that our team, you know, ran out to join that. It's commendable with our coaches, Ben Schneider, who's in his first year, and Chris Daly, who's been an assistant for a while. You know, what they're working with the boys. It's also commendable for parents, the community, and teachers. Everything else at Lewisburg is how these student athletes are raised. And what, just witnessing that was powerful, what we're doing next.
And that's something easy to follow, something part of that and honoring our retirees. It has been a busy few weeks at the middle school since we last spoke one month ago. We're trying to wrap this year up, not trying to think past all the excitement here at the end of the year. While also thinking past the excitement because some of the planning is so important to get moving now. We recently had the middle school honors reception where we honored 268 or 86 of our students. So 60% of the student body for their accomplishments this school year, which is just so impressive. And it speaks to the commitment of our students, of their families, and just how dedicated they are to putting their academics so high on their list. We're proud of all of them. It has been concert delore. We've seen orchestra, we've seen band, we've seen chorus, while they did an outstanding job. I complimented each of the teachers on just the growth from the winter concerts to the spring. It's amazing what the students have done. And again, that commitment from the students really stands out. A couple of exciting events. We had a group of seventh and eighth graders go to the Susquehanna Valley Environment Fund with our eighth graders taking second overall and our seventh grade team fifth overall. Thirty-eight different teams, so they did a really nice job led by Mr. Cattlerman, our seventh grade science teacher. Our art service, excuse me, service club, which is one of our exploratory clubs. They've been working hard for two or three marking periods. Went to skilled nursing, skilled nursing and rehabilitation in Sunbury. To, they designed a mural and they were actually there today in their break room painting the mural for their staff. That will definitely go into the newsletter and is on the website when they have their finished project. So I'll try and get that out for everyone to see. But really impressive and appreciate Mrs. Gobbler for leading that, taking that on and leading the students through that process. We'll wrap up tomorrow. We have a lot of good things at the end of the year. Our outside awards assembly where we invite a lot of different community members in to recognize our students. We have a new award this year in honor of a former DHEMS student who passed away a few years ago. We have Fun Day, we have Penobles. So it really is an exciting time. Our eighth graders talking to a lot of eighth graders today. Spent time with them. We had fifth graders come over from Lindtown for a tour. And they got to practice the lunch line, get a cookie and an apple juice. Hear a little bit about the schedule. But seeing it for my first end of the year as a principal, our awesome eighth graders have already started to feel their charm within this year. So it's a great time, it's a challenging time, but there's a lot of excitement right now. Yeah. I'm just kind of thinking back on what Michael shared. Today, we did have transition visits from fourth, fourth, fifth, sixth. Like we tell the kids, you know, this isn't, we expect you to remember everything, but it just starts to take the edge off when it comes to transitions from grade to grade or even third grade, this is the first big jump to a new building. So even just getting them in the building for a tour, meeting the teachers that they may have when they're in fourth grade. And the kids coming over here to the middle school. It takes some of that edge off, that uncertainty of the unknown, what they're going into. So I thank Michael for working with us since we couldn't navigate all that we have going on to try to find a time, even just a day that it could work was not easy. But we made it work. It was very successful overall to be able to offer that, give the kids that opportunity. This Tuesday, past Tuesday, Lindtown had a fourth and fifth grade concert. And like Michael said, it's incredible to see the growth. And that's one small piece of their education. And really, when you look at the amount of time they spend during the school day, it's pretty miniscule compared to the other subjects that they're part of and they're learning. And to see what our music staff can do with them in that time is amazing. And just being able to be there at the high school, to look at, see a packed auditorium for our fourth and fifth graders. It would be awesome sometime just to like Facebook livestream backstage because they are bouncing around like so excited, dressing up kids in suits, ties, bow ties. It is such a big deal to them. And then to be able to step out on a stage like we have at the high school and just give them that opportunity is amazing. So a great concert this past Tuesday. Also this week, we've had Bloomsburg Theater Ensemble, who is, they do an incredible job. We've had them in school the last few years. They had a new play that they put on this year. Last year was Buffalo Soldiers, which was just awesome and a great experience for our kids. This year it was Zombie Thoughts, which was unsure of the first and second reaction we got there. But it's a social, emotional learning, choose-your-own-adventure experience. And the zombie was, it was kind of like a low-grade Shrek-looking type thing. Even our kids, they had someone to go up and get a picture with the zombie. But it's just been awesome. And talking about a way to really captivate and get kids involved. It was set in a live-action video game where the levels get harder, but you don't get to quit playing. So the students pick the different avatars and the characters they can choose from. And throughout, they have to navigate the different challenges and the hero's anxiety as they're feeling. And that was the zombie piece, kind of this alter ego zombie. Help this hero navigate the anxiety and not give up and fight through it and show grit and determination. So we heard a lot of really good things about it and very excited just to be able to bring things like that to our kids. And it all comes with the support of PSA. They do an incredible job of working with us to find as much as we can to enhance and enrich the experiences our kids get. Another thing we had that was a really cool opportunity that just arose from high school kids reaching out. Today, we had Mrs. Osborne at the high school for entrepreneurship and small business management class. They designed the logo for the Knowledge Bowl that takes place every year at Lindtown. And then they printed the shirts. It said the kids wanted to see the kids they're giving them to. So they got to come over today when their class met and hand-deliver the shirts that they designed and created for our kids. So it's just awesome. And I feel that's something, all buildings, we're really looking for ways to connect kids at the different buildings, showing them their role models, the high schoolers they're looking up to, what they're able to do. And then letting them know, this is, and your lawyers will have these opportunities. So very excited for that connection. And that's something we're hoping to continue for years to come. And then the last thing that I'll share, tomorrow is Kelly's Field Day. Actually, it's Fifth Grade Fun Day at Lindtown, which is a tough, emotional thing. Like Michael said, May is, and I feel like I say this every year in May, it's just an emotional roller coaster of everything going on. You have the retirements, the knowing, it's something I tell the staff, I feel like every year. That, and I love the office, the show. There's a quote at one point where they say, I wish we knew we were in the good old days when we were still in them. And I feel like that's so true. And in May, I feel like that just hits home. We're never all going to be together again. There are always changes, retirements, resignations, changes of life that happen that cause unexpected resignations, even the kids moving on. You form those connections, you build those relationships, and then you're excited and you're looking forward to their future. But it's tough. It's an emotional thing, knowing it will never be the same and they're moving on. So Fun Day is one of those things, celebration of you've made it through elementary school, you're going to the middle school. So very excited for that tomorrow. It looks like weather will cooperate to that. And then Field Day at Kelly, which is just an all-day event that the amount of family and friends that come out to support our kids is almost overwhelming. But it's just incredible to see. And it's such a special day for the kids and one they remember for a long time. So looking forward to that tomorrow.
So we're onto the board in action. And so our first item is the NOU with careful behavioral health.
Yeah, this is for our program called The Bits, Cognitive Behavioral Health. It's a group of individual counseling out of middle schools. We pay up for by a grant. And so we're looking forward to this as a good opportunity for students that are going to have some trauma in their life. And it's going to be a crucial course. We're using it.
Any motion to approve?
So.
Move by Dr. Maddox, that guy who was exposed. Any discussion? All right, well, Dr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. B?
Yes.
Dr. DeMonsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Lyon?
Yes.
Dr. Maddox?
Yes.
Ms. Stan?
Yes.
Motion, Karen.
Thank you.
Our next item, what resources?
Yeah, these were given to you at the last one. There were textbooks that we're going to be utilizing in the new year. This literature titled that we are going to be utilizing in things like One Book One School, as well as some resources for our reading specials to use. Looking for these for approval off another list like this probably the next board meeting. We'd like to continue to approve things for the new year.
Thank you. Bring your motion to approve?
Send them.
Move by Ms. Stanton. Thank you, Ms. Lyon. Any discussion? Ms. Thanos?
Yes.
Mr. B?
Yes.
Dr. DeMonsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Lyon?
Yes.
Dr. Maddox?
Yes.
Ms. Stan?
Yes.
Dr. Gray?
Yes.
Our next item is our policies for first reading. Kathy, any ones to pilot?
Just say again, policy committee working in the case of the first two, 530 and 543, with the new support staff handbook. That necessitated some language changes in the policies that address aspects covered in the support staff handbook. So we have the consistency of language. And then the other policy we worked through as a group was public comment in board meetings. This came to us as a PSBA, PNN template to help guide us in conducting open meetings. And so we worked through that as a group. So those are the three that you have tonight.
Are those our own ARs or are they the ones that came with?
ARs that came with as guidance. And we worked in somewhat customizing those to our needs.
Thank you. Any other motion to approve? So move by Ms. Crowe. Thank you. By Ms. Lyons, any discussion?
Is this thing that you have to read at the open-style meetings such as?
Okay.
To give you an example, so what I usually have, if I have a meeting with everyone, they might have our normal board policy, should we put, the versus. This is 903, you're right. And it has our instructions. I write for the first one. Have it on your hand, I will have to do it. No further discussion? Mr. B?
Yes.
Dr. DeMonsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Lyon?
Yes.
Dr. Maddox?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion, Karen. Okay. Given the time and the fact that we still have work to do, I'm going to keep my board presence report very brief. And I am aware that we continue to have a substitute teacher shortage in the district. And we're going to the school here, but we're always looking for people to prepare for next. So I reached out to the CSI U. And for those of you who may remember, it's Julie Whitmer, who used to be part of the district consulting. Thank you for her. And so she said that they're running a training on July 9th, virtual. This is great for the press because we are looking for substitute teachers. So you can register on their site, their CSI U guest teacher site. It's very easy to register. And then you submit an application to the guest teacher program. There's only four clearances that are required. They are different than the volunteer clearances. I know we have a lot of parents out there that volunteer clearances. There are additional ones required for the guest teacher program. You do need to submit official transcripts for some folks. It may have been a long time since you reached out to your alma mater, but that's something you have to do. And then there are some forms that they help me with. But they have a very good process, they are very helpful, and Julie's a lovely contact. So for anyone who's out there in the public or watches this on video, as we seek to make sure we have full substitute teacher roles for the company, we are really encouraging you to take a look at the CSI training available in the. All right, Ben, you're up.
I'll be brief as well, but just can't believe how this year has gone. My first year here at Lewisburg, it's been fantastic. And fully enjoying meeting everybody. This is end of the year, field trips, concert, Field Day, award ceremonies coming up, move-up day, and even seeing chicks hatch in fourth grade this week. Been seeing some kids take some chicks home today. I also want to thank our retirees over here, I mentioned as well, they're five amazing ladies. And the words that came to mind that I've heard from our speaker were they're very caring and passionate. And getting to see being in the classrooms, meeting Mary for the first time. I thought it was a salesman walking up to Kelly and not letting me in. Being that person in that building, it was fantastic. Working with all that, and some aspects, I'm working with Brenda with counselors, in the counselor meetings and seeing her basketball games, football games. Just really appreciate that and Willis Karen being in the classroom. She just has a lot of passion for those kiddos. And as Eric said, big shoes to fill coming into that classroom. Real quickly, I'll mention a community forum that happened this week. It was a good, a lot of suggestions made, the walls from our survey. Take to our steering committee next week. And looking forward to sharing with all of you at our next board meeting that comprehensive plan, all the extra plans that go with it. So we'll be going through that at our next board meeting. And the survey closes tomorrow, if you would like to ensure for that.
There's a plug for public participation in our survey. Our next item is for the committee reports. So if you have any, if you want to highlight.
Our show was this past meeting and it was fantastic as always. Happy with theirs, but we had two students that were represented. One of them even played the piano, so could help with music. I just, I love seeing all of the students and their parents. And it's just, it's a really nice event. If ever you have an opportunity to go, you should come because. And you can just go to the IU to see them hanging up in the hallway as well. I actually was upstairs meeting with Dr. Crowe earlier this week and they run out of room. So now they're moving the gallery, the holder pictures upstairs. And they're covering the walls up in the administrative area as well. So just need to see students recognize and honor them that way.
Thank you. In Jordan's absence, do you want to say anything about that?
No, I don't have any.
And I'm glad because several folks in the district there at the graduation ceremony this evening and they have much better. Next up is our consent agenda, again with thanks to Green Dragon Foundation. Do I hear a motion to approve? Ms. Thanos? Second by Ms. Kraus? Any discussion? Dr. DeMonsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Kraus?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Dr. Maddox?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Dr. Brand?
Yes.
Our next item, citizen's comments to board on non-adjunct items. Thank you, John.
Problem. We do not have any online comments this evening, but we do have one that came in via email. Dear members of the LASD School Board, I understand that tonight the board will be discussing the possibility of approving an autism support teacher position for the middle school. I wanted to express my support for such a position and my appreciation for the board's swift action in moving to create this position. The creation of a middle school autism support teacher position would provide an important extension of the autism support line that currently begins in Kelly Elementary and continues in Lindtown. The students for which autism support has been identified as the most appropriate placement will greatly benefit from the consistency and support as they make their transition from Lindtown to the middle school. Transitions of all kinds, big and small, represent significant challenges for this population. But moving to a new building with new staff represents an especially big hurdle. A consistent approach as represented through the framework of an autism support room and consistent physical space as represented in the setup of the rooms when possible really go a long way to fostering positive transitions. This is also a population that is very susceptible to regression, which can easily set in during transitions. Providing a continuous autism support line minimizes the risk of regression as the students navigate big transitions between buildings. When a student, any student, feels safe and adequately supported at school, their best traits will shine through and they will be at their best, typically socially and emotionally. Some kids don't really need much to feel safe and adequately supported, while others need a lot. For the neurodivergent population, school in its most basic form, classrooms full of people, noise, rules, bright lights, et cetera, is not welcoming. The school environment alone poses a significant challenge and layered upon that is the expectation to learn and behave in socially appropriate ways. Many neurodivergent kids struggle unsurprisingly with all of this and consequently express themselves negatively perceived behaviors. I mention all of this because it's the negative behaviors that often end up defining these kids. It's often what peers and teachers see the most of or remember the most. But in many cases, negative behaviors are the result of overload and being pushed to the limit over and over again. When these kids feel safe and supported, when they have what they need, they can show just how amazing they are and others can see it too. That's what inclusion is really is. It's not just about throwing people together and making everyone tolerate each other. It's about providing support so that everyone can be in a good place academically, socially, and emotionally at school. And so by creating an autism support teacher position and classroom in the middle school, you're giving more neurodivergent students a chance to belong, to feel supported in the exact way that they need and to be their best selves at school. Thank you for all of your work and support of the special education population. I'm very grateful to the board for taking our concerns seriously and for taking the time to learn more about special ed and consider what changes might be made. With gratitude, Molly Clay.
Thank you, John. And then I'll pass it to you, Janice, as we start our director's conference.
I don't really have anything. May is a busy month, everybody, so.
Same, I'm excited for Field Day. Congratulations to retirees, best of luck in retirement.
I'm just really grateful to have seen some retirees here who impacted both of my kids in different ways. Being a teacher or an administrator or a counselor or any of the things that everybody does in this district. It's a lot, even if you're passionate about it, it's a lot and I really appreciate that. I was just thinking about Mary being the one who had to deal with me when one of the buses had lost my daughter. I was probably not what she was anticipating and she handled me with grace and she was gentle with me because I was scared. And I think that's sort of how all of our teachers and all of our staff. Because these kids are so important to all of us and you all recognize that sometimes parents get a little wrapped up in, in all of it and we have to be helped and managed as well.
Ashley, do you want to share any comments?
I'm just going to follow up about the retirements as well, just congrats to those retiring and just thanking them for their service as a former teacher, the second, what Mary Ann was saying. It's a really hard job and it's a testament to them and to our district, I think, the folks that stayed around so long and that we can celebrate them. So just a happy day.
Thank you.
I think we should congratulate these men who asked for the kids. I know I've mentioned this in a previous meeting. I think that group and that project just sounds so worthwhile and benefits not only the students, but these community organizations. So I'm really very keen to hear about that and eager to hear it continue. Congrats to our stock market challenge winner. Wow, amazing. Good luck to tennis and track this weekend. And also, again, not to be, what do you call it, record, senior moment for me, but the retirees were just really inspiring to me and to hear that as the Senate started on the later side of college education and that's inspiring in and of itself. And then she chose at that point in her life to give her new skill for our district and our children. I just, I just hope that her example will inspire young people to go into the teaching field. While I agree it's really challenging and difficult, seems like it's amazingly rewarding.
I don't have much, just thank everyone for everything. Congratulations to all the students on everything they've accomplished this year.
I think I can add anything?
I will only say that I'm thankful for the folks that we have here representing the middle school because as we're going to transition to next, which will be our work sessions, that part will not be via Zoom and we have in this building, I'm sure, a lot to talk about. You ready to add something? Yeah, all right. So I'm going to adjourn, I'm going to motion to adjourn the business meeting.
Send them.
We got a motion of a second. I'll give your say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, all right. Good night, Ashley.
Good night, everybody.